All right, good evening, everybody. Today is January 11th, 10th, okay, one day earlier, 2023. It's the monthly meeting of the planning board. Could everybody stand and say the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. The first item on the agenda is a special permit with site plan approval, public hearing continued. This is going for 1178 Main Street. This is to be continued without discussion per applicant's request.
Town and Millis Office of the Planning Board noticed a public hearing in accordance with provisions of Chapter 48, Section 11 Mass. General Law. The Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January 10th, 2023 at 7:30 p.m. in the Veterans Memorial Building, Room 229, 900 Main Street, Millis, on the application of Mark Howe, 1178 Main Street, LLC, 64 West Street, Medfield, Mass., 02052. Requesting a special permit under Section 13P and a special permit with site plan approval under Section 13C of the zoning bylaw of the Town and Millis for construction of apartment buildings at 1178 Main Street, Millis, Mass., assessors map 22, parcel number 17, 31, 32, and 33. Copy of the application and site plan is on file with the Office of the Town Clerk and on the Planning Board's webpage. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and place designated. Richard Nichols, Chair.
And this was asked to be continued by the applicant. So we will move on.
You can make a motion to continue to February 7th at 7:30 p.m.
Okay, I can do that. Why do we make a motion to continue to February 7th at 7:30 p.m.?
Second.
All right, motions made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, great, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is 1073 Main Street, marijuana cultivation facility as-built review, project closeout discussion. I'm presenting that as Dave Baker.
Hello, ladies. Ladies and gentlemen, I think the last time I was before this board was pre-COVID, so it's been a while, and that is some of the reasons for the delays and changes in plans.
Could you just identify yourself?
I'm sorry, David Baker, Two Holbrook Way, on behalf of 617 THC, which is the applicant at 1073 Main Street. I provided some information to Camille based on a December 22nd, 2022, as-built inspection performed by Beta Alex Drainville, and the observations he made at that time, some have been completed at this point, and some of the missing documentation. Because it jumped, it didn't jump around, but because it spoke to the same item in the inspection report at the beginning and then again at the end, I kind of put a grid together, which some of you have before you. So initially, the first comment I detected was the engineer did not provide a statement certifying substantial completion of the approved plans and did not denote, did not note any deviations, condition five. So we've submitted a letter from Beals &amp; Thomas, David Laponte, which is a stamped letter dated January 5th. The other item was between our original time permitting with the board and the actual construction, when we first permitted this site, we were considering an MEP system that was a boiler and air handlers on the side of the building with a kind of a shed structure for sound attenuation purposes. That was not the final MEP design that was advanced. They went with a chiller system. Those chillers are self-contained and a soundproof, vibration-proof kind of a structure. So the comments, the next comments of Beal, I'm sorry, next comments of Beta in the first page was the building addition to house mechanical equipment on the southwest side of the building was not constructed. The addition, the building addition, which was for the boiler room, the concrete pad for the CO2 and H2O tanks on the northeast corner was not built. Concrete pads with barbed wire and bollards. And then he goes on to note that concrete pads and bollards were installed on the front of the building where no work was proposed. He goes on to say the existing electrical transformer next to the new handicap spaces, which was shown to be removed, is still there. And the chain link fence and gates that were existing had not been relocated towards the rear of the building. The other findings were that 13 of the 42 parking spaces were 17, the stall paint lines were 17 to 19 feet in length, not 21 feet. And the gate system and fence I just mentioned before prevented full access to all the parking spaces.
So could I ask you a question on that, Dave?
Yep.
On this, I'm reading your grid. So on that one, rework fencing provide full access to all parking spaces, and it's a complete photo three. So you moved the fence?
Yeah, no, we took the gates down to open access to all the spaces. And so the original site plan or plans that you guys approved, a second revised set of plans was submitted to the building department in build, and they showed a hash mark around that gate post and then an additional space. And we took the gates down and put the hash marks in and elongated the stalls from the 19 feet to the 21 feet. And the pictures I attached reflect that.
Okay, so I'm not trying to be difficult. So you guys revised the plan, sent it to the building department, and we didn't get a copy, is what I'm saying?
Correct.
Okay, so that's why we didn't know about it?
That's correct, and that's why Beta didn't know about it.
And I assume because you got your, you have your CCC approval, whatever fencing would be required, is still maintained on that?
No, the CC, the security and CCC is pretty much cameras and interior to the building.
They don't make you have a fence on that? I know you had a fence at one time.
And I think we'll move it to the rear, but right now, to comply with the conditions, they took the gates. So the other thing, if you recall, the spaces were for full buildout of the facility, and we've only built phase one. So I think it was 45 spaces were required per the regulations for phase one, two, and three. We've only built phase one, but rather than come here and argue, I only need 15 spaces out of the 40, I just, we just took the gates down, opened them all up, saved the gates, we'll move the fence back at a later phase. And then they, the, I think what happened was the line strip or just the stripes, the stalls that were short were just going over the existing striping, and then the new ones, he made 21 feet, so we just went back and extended them.
Okay, no, I just didn't understand the whole fence idea thing.
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt.
Well, and the new, the revised plans, which I submitted, gave to Camille, and which, you know, reflected in Beals &amp; Thomas's as-built, show that the little pad, the bigger pad and the addition in the back were not built, and that the smaller chain link fence enclosure was put on the front for phase one for CO2.
And just not to interrupt, but Melissa and I did talk, and part of the thing with these facilities is you have to permit, you, the developer wants to get the building space approved. So we understood that, you know, what you submitted may change, like you said. So I'm not, I'm not surprised at all that, you know, if you change that stuff around, whoop-de-doo, as long as you get a permit for it, you know, that's, that's fine.
Correct. So that was when we first came to the board, that was one of, this was a land use permit, a special permit. We had to show the site plan, we had to show a proposed floor plan, which we did. That proposed floor plan showed full buildout. We've only done phase one. The, in, once we had the land use special permit, then the full MEP plans and CDs were prepared. Those were submitted to the building department, they were submitted to, later on, we'll talk about it, but those were submitted to the Board of Health's peer review consultant for the review of the noise and odor issues. And I apologize, I was not involved day to day at that point, and I, we should have come back and given you guys an updated set.
No, that's all right, just, that's why I was confused.
Yeah, we do, we do think there are de minimis changes. And so the items that were at the, on page one, that were, that I just listed, were, are all shown in photographs. I labeled them, you know, photograph one through nine, I believe it is. You'll see a couple of photograph twos, because they're reflecting different angles of the same, same thing. But with the ADA signage was missing at the time of the inspection, so that's photograph one. Extending the lines to 21 feet is the various photo twos. Reworking the fence to provide full access to all parking spaces is photo three. And then in the next part of Beta's peer review, they mentioned it's outside their purview, but they noticed that the electrical vault covers were not secured, that a metal stairs near the transformer were not secured to the concrete pad, and that there were a set of double doors that had elevation change, and there were no stairs there. The vaults were, the covers to the Eversource vaults were dogged down, and a series of jersey barriers were put around them. The issue with Eversource, the reason the existing transformer is still there is because the building's still on that original transformer. We're waiting on Eversource to get transformers to set to the site, yeah, months and months to get to the final plan. And then we would decommission the existing pot transformer that's in that fenced enclosure. The pictures will show the ram sets on the, on the, the metal stairs at the, at the entrance. And then the contractor chose to regrade the elevation right at the front doors to make it less than seven inches, so no stairs are required. It was about 12 inches. The other items, you know, then Beta went on to make recommendations, provide an as-built, which was provided, it's Beals &amp; Thomas, I believe it's dated January 5th. They wanted us to move the fence, you know, photo three, to open up all the parking, extend, it should say paint, extend the paint lines to 21 feet on the 13 spaces that was done. And then the condition number 20 was that, and this was based on the original plans when we were doing an addition, the special permit said provide stamped structural engineer drawings of the footings for any addition. If you recall, we were, I think it was, we were keeping it less than 6,000 square feet or less than, may have been 3,000 square feet. But if we went over that square footage, we triggered an industrial permit review through Board of Health, so we kept our addition initially less than the 6,000 square feet. Your permit, your special permit said we could go up to that square footage, and it was, and based on selecting a different MEP system, no, no addition was done. But on the Beals &amp; Thomas site plans, the revised ones, there is a typical pad detail, and that's really just for the stair landings and that CO2 structure at the front of the The other condition, I forget the number, was a provide a tree donation of $4,900 when we were doing our special permit, and per the local regulations, we had to add landscaping, but because it's a 70-acre site of 40 acres of woods, adding more trees was deemed not all that important, and that $4,900 check has been given to Camille, and I think she's deposited it by now. The, probably the biggest catch-22 we have is we cannot get our, we cannot give you a copy of the CCC license until we have every local permit and sign off. So what we're proposing is, you know, conditional sign off, and that upon, upon receipt, we can give you guys a copy. The other item was, back in '21, we filled out the Charles River Pollution Control District permit. We got a draft permit. They've done a site inspection. There was a little confusion. I attached some emails that were as recent as yesterday, basically from Charles River, saying, we'll get you your permit next week. We, we thought, you know, if there's been no changes, which have been none, you know, everything's fine, we'll get you a permit next week. So I attached the draft, which is dated from 2021, and the email traffic from the engineer at Charles River. I also gave you a copy of the Millis Board of Health operating license for 2023, and I'd already given Camille the full Board of Health decision and their conditions for, you know, starting up the facility and monitoring the facility for noise and odor under the Millis regulations. The, the other kind of catch-22 is the building inspector and the building permit, final sign off, he want, he goes around and checks that everybody else has signed off first. And the issue was, there is a, because we only did phase one, there's a second means of egress, and there's a photo of it, painted yellow lines that go out to the side entrance, but he's, there is another door that will eventually be an extension of a common hallway that leads into the warehouse, and he's saying, what if you came out of this door, how would you know where to go? Even though you're compliant, you have two means of egress for your facility. I want, I want a life, you know, I want a letter from the engineer, I'm sorry, from the architect, and I want some battery backup lights and some exit signs showing the way from this door. So that plan has been issued. He said he would issue it as a separate building permit, so it would not hold up the first building permit, because he's happy that the second means of egress is there for the facility, he's just, you know, belts and suspenders being more cautious. So that plan was prepared, and it's, it's already been submitted by the electrician for the battery backup lights, you know, what, what if there was an emergency and there was no, no lights, how would you get out?
Right, so, and I spoke to Mike, so he does not recommend us issuing the, you know, the decision tonight.
That's fine. No, I'm just briefing you guys on.
No, and I'm just letting you know, yeah, I just followed up on that also, so.
So, the architect has shown the egress plan, shown all the dimensions, that from that door that Mike's concerned about, the existing second means of egress is compliant for every point in distance inside the warehouse, but.
Well, that's, that's, that's his thing.
That's his bare lupe, right.
We have trouble taking care of our own stuff.
We're gonna do it, but he did say, I'll do it under a separate permit, so it won't sign off, hold up the sign offs on the main building. So that is, kind of concludes everything I was aware of. If there's anything else, you guys?
No, I think, I mean, Melissa, you can follow up, but, you know, we've gone over, we've been going over to make sure that, we're trying to get it done.
Yeah.
So we have been going back and forth, I think, and, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we were pretty good with.
Yeah, no, I think all the things you went over addressed our outstanding issues, so we did a lot of work in the last couple of weeks.
Yeah, well, I got brought back in, and I kind of pulled it together and heard what everybody was saying, what's, who wants this? Went and saw Camille, went and saw Mike, and, you know, the checks are easy, it's the, it's the stuff that's weather dependent outside, that's more of a problem, but, you know, they're getting close.
Yep.
So, thank you.
All right, thank you very much for the report, appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
I don't know, Dave, let's ask Dave. Dave, do you want us to put you on the agenda for the 7th?
Yes, please.
Okay, so we'll just put you on the agenda.
I'll let you know about a time.
All right, good, thank you. All right. And the next item on the agenda is Dunkin' Donuts, 871, as-built plan review. Dan American. And so, come on up, Dan.
Good evening. Dan American, Legacy Engineering. I actually wasn't involved in the permitting on this, I just did the as-built plan, so I don't know how helpful I can be.
No, you.
But I'm here.
You submitted it, we, Melissa and I looked at it, and it was one change, just so the board knows, they put the, don't go here because you're too tall thing in a different location, but I think it's actually in a better location, because it's, it's more towards the, just as you drive in. So if you drive in and you hit it, you're not like already ordered and already at the end, you're gonna hit the thing, you know, prior to being able to order. That's the only change they made. So other than that, it's what we asked for, which is the as-built, so. I need to make a motion to approve it?
Sure.
All right, and we're good with that one, so write it, I think.
Yeah, no, the as-built looks much better, because we're looking for it.
Yeah. The other one was not. I make a motion that we approve the as-built plan prepared by Legacy Engineering for 871 Main Street.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great, thanks. All right, and now, again, Mr. Dan American for Akon Place Detention Basin Update.
Yeah, so this is gonna be an update. We're working with Beta on kind of coming up with a modification that we think will take care of the issue, the issue being that the water's not draining out quick enough. So what we're, we submitted some calculations and some, some, some plans to modify the outlet structures, and Beta suggested that we turn the basins into basically like a giant sand filter, which will work, because the basins are built above grade, and there's this substantial volume of sand under the loam layer that was imported and installed there. So I think that option is, it will work. We basically would introduce a subdrain into that sand layer, so the treatment occurs by filtering the water through the loam and the sand, and then you release the water slowly so that you don't have it sitting in the basin. So they, they need more information from me.
And the only thing with that is in Melissa's, because this basically is, you have to dig and put the drain in.
Yeah, we put a subdrain in the bottom of each basin.
No, no, I understand, and you'd have to put the subdrain in, and then you'd add some more sand. That would take care of the issue, but I think she had suggested that we do it sooner than later to make sure we have time to see if it's gonna work.
Well, we gotta go through, and we have to get the technical stuff resolved, and then I have to go see other boards, not just your boards, so. The next step would be for me to continue to work with Beta to come up with a technical solution that the Beta thinks is okay, and then we gotta go see the Board of Health.
So the only thing that I can say is that, you know, we've identified this as an issue about a year ago.
Mm-hmm.
It was pretty close. So I would like to put a timeframe on getting it wrapped up, just because I don't want to have it lagged. I know you still work on it, but what I don't want to have happen is the can to get kicked down to the end of the road, and then all of a sudden it becomes a panic. So if we could get that done sooner than later, that would be better, just in case you run into any other issues down the road, you know what I mean, that we have to resolve.
Yeah, well, I can't control the other boards, and.
Correct.
You know, Board of Health meets once a month, like you guys do, so, you know, my goal is between here and your next meeting is to get the technical issues addressed with Beta, then we can come back and brief you on that, and then I would submit a request to the Board of Health for a modification.
Right.
So that.
Time frame.
And then that would be something that they, you know, I don't know if they're gonna take one meeting or two meetings or what on that.
So realistically, if, you know, you're looking at three meetings, which is three months, so we're January, February, March, so you can start to dig at the beginning of April, pretty much, or maybe earlier if we have a good winter.
Right.
So the goal would be to try to get that in, because we want to see how it performs.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, 100%.
Like I said, I'm just, we've been talking about this basin for.
For a long time.
A long time.
Yep.
All right, great, well, thank you for the update on that, appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, and now, and we're actually almost on schedule, Anthology of Millis, excuse me, assisted living facility, Dover Road, as-built review, project closeout, and Wayne Foley will be presenting that.
Evening, I'm Wayne Foley, I'm with Callahan Construction.
How you doing?
Good. Good, how are you?
Good. So let's see here, we had, we got our as-built, and so that's all taken care of, and then, actually, I'll let Melissa go through, we, because the, we had given you a temporary, just for the folks at home, the contractor was told by the developer that, to get a temporary occupancy. They found out later that in order to actually be able to open the facility, they'd have to get a full occupancy in order to get their kitchen open, i.e., that's why they're back again, you know, which they're close, they're done anyhow, but that's why they're back again for a full occupancy on this. So there were some outstanding items, they're not 100% done, they're 99, 98, 97% done, there's just a bunch of, you know, closeout items that can't be done because of the weather, and there's gonna be some ongoing stuff, because they have to wait till the grass grows, and they have to clean the basin out, and a few other things. So we had Beta put together a report, and basically this was to, you know, protect the town's interest in the neighbors. So if you could just do a quick executive summary on that.
Sure. Yep, so I think in your packet is the as-built review that we did, it has some pictures, and just kind of summarizes the existing site conditions. You can see some of the trees and landscaping that is in place. And we also put together a bond estimate, and it outlines the items that are not yet complete, and that we're suggesting somebody be held until they are. So a big portion of that is the seeding of the lawn, and there's a New England seed mix on a portion of the site. So those numbers were provided by the contractor and what they plan to do in the spring. In addition to that, there was some, just some miscellaneous items. Hoods need to go in the catch basins, some repairs to the stone dust walkway. The basin itself, the stormwater basin in the back, there's a leak in the outlet control structure, and some, one of the banks of the basin was kind of sloughing in, and needs to be repaired. So we have costs in there for all of those items. There's all, were also some erosion control for temporary stabilization, because now the site's kind of in, it's, it's in this limbo where it's out of the construction, where there, you don't need the intense erosion controls from the original construction fee, SWIP plan, but it's still not stable, so you don't want the topsoil and everything to, you know, get into the drainage system and cover sidewalks and things like that. So I know since we wrote this, did this inspection, a lot of those were put into place.
Yeah, so we added additional erosion control measures around all of the areas that we were getting the washout, and we cleaned up the washout that was there, we cleaned up the washout and put additional erosion control in.
Okay. So we provided the bond estimate for the items that, you know, the substantial items that still need to be completed, and then we also provided a scope and fee for additional services over the next six months to do occasional checks on the site, to make sure the erosion controls are, you know, still working, that the basin is still functioning, and things like that, if you need just to go out and just keep tabs on it until the project is completely closed out. Well, also in that scope and fee is another final, I keep saying final as-built review, but a final, final as-built review, to check on all the landscaping, make sure it survives the winter, the trees and things like that, and that these miscellaneous items that are in the bond get completed, and then that the final as-built plan captures them. I think that was everything in our, in our scope and.
Yep.
And fee. So there's basically the two items that we provided, and are recommending that the board holds.
Yes.
Or collect funds.
And so Callahan has provided the bond for the amount that was requested. The only thing is, we will, we want to put in, in our decision.
Is this my question?
Oops, sorry.
Just be a letter.
A letter, sorry. We'll put in our letter that, something from Town Council, it's just basically saying that the work, well, I can read it, which.
Can I just interrupt for a sec? I'm sorry. Before you do that motion, you need to.
There was no motion. Oh, okay, I was just gonna, that's fine, I was just gonna read what Jay had, but that's fine.
That was.
No, this is, no, I know, but that's after speaking, with the, the motion, suggested motion. Oh, okay, so that's for the bond?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So it's first approved.
Okay, no, that's fine. All right, so the bond estimate was for, it was 155.
140.
140.
180, yeah.
Okay, I don't have it up. All right. Oh, okay, I don't have that open yet. Okay, sorry about that. All right, so I make a motion that we accept the bond for $114,180 as detailed on the attached worksheet.
Second.
All right, motion is made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, and then, I can read this. And then, I can read this?
Yes, I mean, once you're all done discussing, that is a motion that has to be made.
Also, okay.
Yes. Are you going to accept the Western Security Company?
Okay. Okay. See, this is the stuff when we get into the lawyer stuff that, I know the building stuff, the lawyer stuff gets me a little confused. Okay, so the next thing, so on this, they're pretty much done. We're just basically waiting for spring to come to be able to wrap this up. There are outbuildings that are not part of this, that they're covered underneath the overall scope and fee. So there are some buildings that, right now, they're not going for occupancy for. They will at some point in time, and I think if, you know, we could just wait till they're all done. Is that going to, Wayne, can I ask you a question? Is that, did you guys have any thought on, you know, you can move into them if you get occupancy, correct?
Correct. And they're pretty close. Like I mentioned, they're like 95% done.
You're just waiting for transformers, right?
Gas and, gas and power.
Okay, yeah. So they're just waiting for gas and power. So I mean, basically, everything's done. They just haven't been able to get connections on them. So, I mean, we can make the motion to approve or write our letter to say that they're done, and just, we would just exclude those other, you know, buildings, just they wouldn't be part of this decision.
So this would just be for the main building?
Yeah. Unless, what do you think?
Well, if the outbuildings fall under the building to Parkland's purview, the overall site plan is accurate, correct?
So we could just approve the whole site?
Yes.
Okay, so we can approve the site, and we're done. That's fine.
If your as-built is accurate, then I think that is sufficient for the concomitant.
I think, just to clarify, the as-built plan did have some things on it that weren't reflected that will need to be added based on the final condition. So it's...
So, like what?
You mean at the end, for the second, final, final review?
Yes, yes.
Like, so what is now interim as-built?
Yeah.
Would that be considered?
That would be fine. Yeah, I mean, the as-built reflects the final, reflects the current condition, but you need to, you know, the trees are not on there.
Correct. GLM is out there currently. They got delayed the last couple of days with the weather, but per your comments and note, like the side, the walkway on Bridge Street was not on the as-built.
The sidewalk is not on the as-built.
The sidewalk, which they're including that now.
They're installed. Like, we're out there, we...
Right.
But they're not included, correct?
It's installed for the approved plan, but it's not actually reflected on the as-built that you have in hand.
Okay. So we still can approve it. We just have to get a final as-built.
Could be pending receipt of...
And that's included in the bond as well, noted on the bond as well for the final as-built, yep.
Just, and then part of this is, because there's a lot going on on this, is to make sure that you guys know what, you know, what's remaining, that they'll end up picking up. So, you know, some of the stuff is stuff they can't do, some of the things that they just did, because I know that sidewalk was underway, what, last week or the week before?
Yeah, it was like right before the holiday, I think.
Right. So, so that, I mean, that's fine with me. And we've got the bond to cover it anyhow, so.
Yeah, as long as we're not releasing the bond, and this documentation, it still needs to be done, that's fine.
Right. So we should be good.
So today, tonight, we're approving the interim site plan?
We would, yeah. We were approving the site plan so we can, the interim site plan, I guess, is what we could call it.
Or can we refer to the date? That it, that's all it is?
The date of the as-built that you have now? I mean, you're...
Pending final site plan?
Yeah, I think so. I think so.
Yeah.
And if I could just interrupt.
Yeah.
This motion also has to be made in reference to the bond.
Okay. Okay.
Do we do this before we...
Yeah, well, I should do that.
This has to do with the bond.
Right.
Having, you're accepting the bond anyway. You've approved the bond amount.
Correct.
And now this, the Town Council, since there was no place on the bond for the town design, you know, this motion made.
Okay. So what, since we've approved the bond, so why don't I make a motion that, I hereby, I can read what Jay sent us, or actually, I think you guys have it, but I hereby move the planning board accept a bond from the applicant and Western Security Company only with respect to certain work that remains to be completed as set forth on...
Today's date.
Whatever today's date is, which is the 10th, 11023, and said bond being sufficient to secure the work necessary for the applicant to obtain a certificate of occupancy for building.
Well, 125 Dover Road?
For 125 Dover Road in the project, and provided further that nothing herein may be considered to be an approval of any other remaining work of the project, which is not covered by said bond.
Second.
All right. So the motion's been made and seconded to accept the bond from Western Security Company for remaining work on 125 Dover Road. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, good.
And I think this basically is what would go in a letter because that, I think, covers everything.
Okay. Okay.
Do you agree, Melissa?
The motion that was just made?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. So do we make a motion to send a letter to...
Nope.
We're done?
We made your motion.
Okay, so we're done?
And dropped a letter, and does that go to you, Wayne, or to CA Ventures? Who should the letter be made out to? I mean, we can see, see other people, but it shouldn't be me.
I think it'd be made out to us, where we're the builders on the project right now, and then we can forward it off to the bodies after.
Okay. All right. And then that covers everything, so when they wrap up the stuff in the spring, this that mysterious work that Melissa had that we didn't know about. And that'll be all taken care of when they wrap everything up in the spring. So, great. All right, good.
So any, the next steps for us right now, or everything's, everything's good?
Everything's good. Yep. So we're done until, you know, obviously, at the very end, we'll have to have another, the final, final as-built, and they'll do the site inspections along the way just to make sure that there's no mud flowing down the street or anything.
Are the, through the chair, are those funds, have they been provided?
Yes.
Yes, the social fund has been provided, yes.
Yeah.
Yep, so those are all been taken care of. So, yeah, we're in good shape.
Okay.
All right, great.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for coming. Appreciate it.
Wayne, I'll get that letter too by the end of the week.
Great, thank you.
Okay, next. Next time we approve a senior living facility, I'm going to be a, so I'm going to be a pro at it.
You'll be in it.
You're probably right.
And then there'll be a conflict of interest.
Yeah, that's right. All right.
I actually thought that's where you were going with that statement.
Deliberation vote on special permit for Dish Plant Approval, Crown Castle, Dish, 1073 Main Street.
Yeah, Melissa drafted the decision. The public hearing was closed, and I need to deliberate and vote on the decision.
Okey-dokey. And, that is in here, so.
It's been put together at the end of the decision.
At the very end. Oh, here it is right here. And, all right, so I should let, do we want, how much of this do we want to read?
You have to read, you just go over the special conditions and findings.
Yeah. So basically, on this one, just so the public knows, this is a permit they renew ever, well, actually, what did they do? On this one, they wanted to change it, so they wanted to add a couple of, they wanted to add a couple of antennas, so they had to come, and it's on an existing tower. So basically, everything was fine. The only thing we did ask, which was, was for additional screening, which was requested from the cemetery. And so the applicant provided $2,500.
They haven't yet...
They haven't yet, but it's in their decision to. Provide $2,500 for additional screening for the cemetery to help block the cell tower. So I'll let you guys thumb through it, and if, when you're ready, let me know. We can, anything jumps out at you. If you're folks at home, this is definitely must-see TV.
I'm sure if everyone's okay with it, you can make a motion to approve, you know, this, which is...
Okay. Which is, we, this one here?
Just that, the motion to approve.
Oops, sorry. Okay, great, perfect. All right, George, you, you good?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, good. All right. So I make a motion to approve, install three antenna and ancillary equipment along with an adjacent equipment cabinet installed in an existing concrete pad at 1073 Main Street for Dish Wireless Communication, Crown Castle.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. All set.
At the end of it, you can have it be signed, so don't need to use all that.
All right. Next item is FY...
Level funded budget.
All right, FY '24 budget, so we're not getting any more money. So basically, this is just to fund the planning board for next year. And, do we have a round to bid?
Can I make a motion that we double Camille's...
Yeah.
Second then. I just see it's based contract, I'm telling you, because contract hasn't been, so it's done. So, we need, yeah, the whole thing.
Okay. All right, so, all right, so the, I make a motion, you guys are all set, for a level funded budget for the planning board for the amount of $32,988.
Fiscal year '24.
Fiscal year '24, thank you.
Second.
All right. Motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. All right.
Minutes?
The minutes. I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the last meeting, which I'm looking for the date.
November 15th.
November 15th, as written.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and...
Could you just instead of meeting date for March?
March, okay.
March 7th works.
March 7th?
Yeah.
March 7th works.
March 7th. Yep. Wait a minute, hold on. I should, I think, I don't know if it's favored. Sorry. Why is it 10:30? Yes, that's right.
Because you have to slide it to watch.
No, I have an old, I have a very old phone. I have a seven.
You still have to slide it.
You do? Yes, that works. Got it.
Okay, all right.
All right. So the only other thing was just for an update for, just the things that I know about that are going on in town. So obviously, Anthology is wrapping up, so they're hoping to get, they're hoping to get their approval from the state, they'll be able to open the commercial kitchen, and they'll actually be able to start getting people in there, which is good because that means that that will be, I'm assuming, tax revenue for the town.
Well, do we know what the number of unit, the number of rooms they had?
I can't remember. Is it slay a test?
Yeah.
Okay. I failed.
No worries, Camille.
So they're, anyhow, they're, they want to get their main building open, and then they'll finish up the outbuildings. The 617 growing facility, they're hopefully, maybe next week, or they're hoping by maybe next month, they will be open, or get their approval from us to open. So that's good. That'll be, that'll be off the books. And then Glen Allen, they're still building over there because I can hear them. So they're, they're into phase three, which is the final phase, so that is still going. And then I know up on, up near, where's the Finn Fernfeather, George?
Larch.
Yeah, Larch. Up there, they have that building on Main Street, which is in, is, that, that's still under construction, which I think they had more than one building in there.
There's three.
Yeah, three. So they've got that, that going. What else? Emerson Place, they're actually doing work down there. Melissa has been down there, Beta's been down there on our behalf, and actually, Melissa, what were they, they were doing sewer, I think? They tied in the main sewer for the second time.
For the second time, yeah.
Right. Because the first time, they couldn't make the water run uphill. And then you guys were in there doing testing. They did pave the roads. They paved the roads up to where, the very end, where they had that thing they had to redo.
Yeah, there's a section that's not quite paved yet, but they did all their water pressure testing, chlorination, right over, like, Christmas time.
Right.